Are we recording? All right, I think we can start maybe a little bit early. Is that okay, or maybe we should wait until six o'clock?
We can give it a minute, just to be safe. The door was on the first floor.
Alrighty, I would like to call to order the March 12th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Stacy, sorry to interrupt. In order to do this before the agenda, actually, I did see that the workshop is sort of broken up and in order for us to kind of keep consistency, I would like to have workshops all collectively done in unison. So if there's a need to do number, Agenda Item Four before Seven and Eight, I'd like to make a motion that we group them collectively and move Seven and Eight forward before we start the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, do I have any discussion of the motion? And just to kind of clarify for everyone, what Dave is saying is that we've got a bunch of workshops and then we're heading into some other items, so he would like to move Items Four, Seven, and Eight to the top, and then Items Five, Six, Nine, Ten, and then Eleven. So I see no problem with that, other than the fact that he said it's consistency from a workshop perspective. So, any other discussion by board? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, passes unanimously, excellent. All right, so next item on-
Quick question, I'm sorry. Did you say you wanted to move the workshop items to the front? Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna move Seven and Eight after Four.
Okay. All right, so next item on the agenda is roll call, and I'll start to my left.
Riley Bergeron.
Ryan Smith.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
David Trask.
Amanda Garette.
Tim DeRoche.
Darren Finnegan.
Excellent, we have a full board today. Next item on the agenda is Planning Board Policies and Procedures. So, everyone has in their packet the policies and procedures that... Oh, sorry about that, you're right. The next item on the agenda are the minutes. At this time, I will seek a motion to approve or amend the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Alrighty. Onto item number three, Planning Board Policies and Procedures. So you all have in your packet the policies and procedures. So this is an exercise whereby we're going to have discussion, dialogue, review. I believe the request from staff is that we review and adopt the amended policies and procedures. I know personally, I have had a chance to review them, I have a lot of questions, and so I guess, you know, a couple things that we can do. I can kind of start chatting about my thoughts and opinions about the policies and procedures, or, I mean, I can welcome to the board as well if anyone wants to start.
I have to, hold on, I'm gonna pull this up where I was... The, I don't know where exactly I'm gonna find it here, but it's in, it's regards to Planning Board members having to call city staff if they're not able to attend a meeting, and I didn't know if email could be added to that, or if there's a reason it says phone, a call.
Call or email could work, we could change it to contact, or reference both methods, either way.
I feel, my first instinct would probably be to shoot off an email, so...
Where, which section?
Yeah, it was part of the blue-
Or page number.
It's Article Two D. Says if a situation occurs that does not allow a Planning Board member to attend a meeting, a call to the planning and permitting staff is required.
Yep. I'll make note of that.
Okay. All right, so I can start with some of my thoughts. So I do see that the last revision was on March 12th, 2024. I see there's a lot of blue lined in here from, I believe it's Sally, right? So I also went online, and I tried to see as she was updating each of the blue lines, version control of it, so it's unclear to me, you know, which items that she, you know, ultimately started on the 12th, some that were revised prior to that. I personally would like to see our version control of each of these edits, so I have an understanding of when some of these were added. I will say, you know, some of the questions that I have, I think the most glaring one for me, is G, the use of individual electronic devices during meetings to obtain information. I do know, and we don't have anything here right now, but I do know that we have members of the board that really do like to bring their own personal devices and really delve into the maps, I think they find it incredibly helpful. This is, this is all a new blue line text amendment, so my question is, you know, when did this come to fruition? Why did she put this in here? Was there a reason? And ultimately, when I go through all of these policies and procedures, my bottom line, my fundamental bottom line, and what I want to know is, when you look at the disclaimer, it says, "The Auburn Planning Board..." So "Any conflict between the Auburn Planning Board's policies and procedures and state or local laws shall be superseded by state or local law." So I want to know, through all of her blue line edits, I want to know what is in line with the state law, what is more restrictive than the state law, and what is less restrictive, right? So when we talk about personal devices around the board, is that in line with state and local laws, so then we're just, we're harmonizing?
There's, so, the meeting, you missed the training, Tim actually drilled down on it, and actually, if you want to take this, because you can, what it is, is the public has to have access to everything that we have access to, so if you're looking at your phone-
No, I completely understand, I understand that, but I want it, I, for my own personal edification, I want, I want it in writing, so I can see in parity, not just that necessarily, Riley, but I want all the blue line edits that way. I want to see all these blue line edits, where we're in parity with state and local laws, where we're more restrictive, and where we're less restrictive. That's my personal opinion, I could, I welcome the board.
In that particular one, the recommendation was, and why that particular one is in the policy, was that if there's a desire to drill into those maps, we should do that on the screen that everybody can see. Not that we can't drill into those maps, but just that each individual shouldn't have different information than the public and the other board members have.
To Stacy's, actually, I agree with a handful of those, certainly. To me, the, the blue, you know, since there's blue that's been struck, and then blue that's underlined, but yet that's revised on 312, I don't know which, which goes with which. You know, certainly for me, there have been times when either a member of public, or an individual on the board, has referenced a particular statute, or something that makes me go, you know, gee, you know, I don't, I'm curious as to what that is, and what they're referencing, so I've, you know, there may be opportunities to, you know, how do we go about confirming, or researching, or agreeing with, or saying, well, you might have misread that, in-flight during a meeting? Or do we say, nope, we're gonna, you know, I don't agree, I need more time, because someone made a reference to something that I don't have access to, because I'm not allowed to look to see what that is?
Well, we'd have staff pull it up, so that we could all see it. If there's, if they reference something, we could have staff pull it up on the screen so that we see it, and the public sees it, because we have to, everyone in the public, and everyone at home, has to have the same access to the stuff that we have. So if there is a reference, we could say, hey, they just referenced something like that, we pull that up, so that everyone can look at it, because-
So Riley, this is public knowledge, the public has it in front of them, so all we're doing is then-
I really wish you had this training, because Tim drilled down on this, and Sally answered it pretty good.
And here's the thing too, I totally get it, Riley, and, and I'm not trying to drill down on just this one per se, I think it's across the board, all of these blue lines, like, I understand, but I personally want to know what, like, where some of these are derived from, and especially, I don't say especially, but, you know, the opening remarks, like, I want to know how many other municipalities and jurisdictions have opening remarks? Where did this opening remark come from? Was it a solo person?
She had a couple good answers for that, in that meeting.
Yeah, well-
Which is available, right?
And it depends on the board, too, on how detailed the opening remarks and sort of script is for following the right process. Board of Appeals, as an example, we have traditionally provided a script for the entire meeting, that leaves room for discussion that's not on the script, but it dictates when the public hearing opens, when the public hearing closes, and allows for the discussion to happen, but the chair has traditionally wanted to have that guide to go by. So, the opening remarks are just a way to make sure that, at each meeting, that the public hears how to conduct themselves, and how the board conducts themselves at the meeting, is the primary purpose of it, to make sure everybody knows what the expectations are.
Eric, do you know which of these that are in blue are due to something that needs to be clarified, like, maybe we're no longer referring to planning and development, we're now planning and permitting, versus those areas that were in conflict with a state law, or versus those that were suggested by Sally for the purpose of just whatever the purpose might be?
I don't have like a spreadsheet that would detail those, I mean, we could go through each one, and we could explain that. We do, the changes were, the majority of the changes were made in the draft that the board reviewed, or had on their agenda multiple times last year, but because the meetings were going so late, we ended up not continuing on to adoption after 9:00 PM. And then, the, I would say the minority of the changes came since the last training, either from staff or from Sally, based on the feedback that we got at the training, and based on Sally's legal advice, to make sure that we're consistent with state law and case law, that's changed over time. We do have versions that show the, what was in front of the board last year, what was changed by staff as a result of the discussion that happened at the training in January, and then what was trained by, changed by Sally, no, not her final review. We do have that versioning, but we thought that would be confusing to the public and the board, so we tried to make the changes look uniform in the final version that was in the packet, but we do, we do have those versions that we could-
I would like to see that, actually, the version control of, of all of these edits, especially the ones of the, the insertions, right, so...
And if you, if you want to go through each one of them, we can, I can tell you which ones came from which part of the process, if you want to.
Yeah, no, I'd like it in writing, if you don't mind. Like, I want to see this, I'm, that's my personal opinion, I mean, I don't know, I could be like over-
I do have, I've been, I certainly would like to see it as well, for the matter of, you know, in the interest of time, certainly I wouldn't want to have to take everybody's to go through all of these, but I did, I had a question on like on H., Article Two H, for example, where it says, "Former board members who wish to represent the private interests of third parties before the board shall comply with," you know, yada, yada. I, I don't know who former board members are or aren't, is there a way to access a list of former board members on the city site in order to be able to make that determination?
Yeah, so we, and we can look specifically at that statute, I think it's either a six or 12-month period, so it's not like we're looking back to the, you know, 80s to see if somebody was on the board, it's, it's a recent board member, I'm pretty sure it's a 12-month requirement.
Yeah, and then if I look at Article Six, Subsection B, it says, "Every board mem, every member of the board who is in attendance, when a question is put to vote, shall, unless excluded by interest, give her his or her vote." So does that mean associate members should vote? I guess, I'm not sure how I'm reading that.
Which number was it? Article-
Just go to page five. So it's, so, so Sally wants every board member to vote? Even if they're associates?
No, it's, it's full board members that vote. Yeah. I think that's detailed earlier, but we can make that clear in that section, too.
And I guess too, when it says here, "The use of individual electronic devices during meetings to obtain or read emails or text messages," so how is that enforced, right? So like, if I get a text message from-
Which section do you want? Page?
Page five, yeah, back to the whole, like, text message thing. So if I get a text message from my daughter, and I look at it, right, do I then have to like illustrate to like Sally, or to you, that it was a text message, a personal text message from my daughter, and should not be broadcast for the public to see?
So, and I think it's pretty clear in that section, that the use of individual electronic devices during the meeting to obtain information, or read email or text messages related to matters before the board, is to be avoided unless the information is, is displayed on the public screen, so unless she's texting you about something that's before the board, then you could look at that device.
Yeah, I, I think we're just all trying to be cognizant of the current environment that we're in, and I think there's a lot of scrutiny on the board, and I don't want to open up Pandora's box, whereby, you know, if we have text amendment in here around, you know, receiving a message, receiving a text, and then having, from a public perspective, having, you know, having to show something personal, right, to prove that we were not doing anything nefarious.
There's no, no expectation that you share something personal, it's only if it is related to matters that are before the board.
And I don't think, I, I think it's, it's more for your, your information and your guidance, for your conduct, I don't think it's something, I can't imagine that we would, I mean, you wouldn't ask to show anything that you would be looking at on your phones.
So, so here's the thing, I mean, I'm definitely welcome more thoughts and opinions, I, I think that, you know, Riley had an edit, I have an edit, I don't feel comfortable adopting this without the edits being amended within this, but it, just because of the environment that we're in, so I personally would want to see the edits completed, and then back before us again, but that's just my personal opinion.
I would agree with that.
So I, I have noted two edits, one of them was suggested by Riley to allow for the staff contact by email or phone, and then the second edit was to clarify that the Page Five, Section B, quorum in voting, that every full voting member, rather than every member of the board, who's in attendance, shall vote unless excluded, and it gives reasons why you could be excluded, so we can certainly make those changes, it's up to you as a board to either tell us to do that and adopt them, or, you know, to give us some other direction as a board.
I, I would like to also understand whether or not things, like, where they, where things originated from.
Is there, is there anything you guys are opposed to? Because I don't know why we're kicking this down the road, is there, is there anything that, if there's anything that's in it, we should address it now specifically? And like, if we can, if we can say to staff those two edits, amend those two things, and then let's pass it, then we don't have to put this back on our agenda next month or whatever.
I know, I know for me, with regard to where things came from and their origins, for those things that are state statute, or required by law, then I wouldn't be really scrutinizing those, whereas those things that are suggested edits, I may, I would look at more thoroughly, and determine whether or not I agree or disagree, that's all.
They're in front of you now, again, to determine if you agree or disagree with them or not?
I can't tell whose is whose.
So would it matter?
It gets done.
If it's the same test?
And maybe I'm trying to, I don't want to speak for Dave, but I think what he's trying to say is, you know, what new blue line edits are in line with state and local laws, which ones are not, I think he wants to know the genesis of that, and then-
I don't think there's anything that Sally put on here that would, she would do to, that would contradict state law, doesn't seem like that would be in her interest.
No, that, that was the purpose of her review, to ensure that there were no conflicts with state law.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it hurts, I mean, like, listen, this has been around for a while, like, I also don't want to jam this through either, and again, this is nothing, I'll be honest with you, thinking about this, it has everything to do with the next generation of folks that are going to be on the Planning Board, and then this is going to be in their laps, and they're going to be holding to some of these, so I feel like I want to do my due diligence for them, so that they don't get this on their lap, and they're like, what the heck, no one like kind of questioned this, like, what does this mean, like, how does this apply to me, like, what's the force of it?
That's what we're doing right now, is having questions about it.
Yeah, exactly, and so we're talking to staff about it, yeah.
Yeah, so if we have questions about it, let's ask the questions.
Riley, I did ask the question, and in order to get the answer, the staff needs to go away in order to determine the response.
Is there anything on, on here that is not required by statute or general case law? Like, is there anything that you know of that's just way above and beyond, that would be an option for us to edit? Either came from staff or Sally?
You know, there are things in our ordinance that are different, more stringent only than, than state law, we can't be less stringent. This set of policies and procedures combines some of the desires that the board has expressed, that may be, they're compliant with state law, but they may be more stringent or more specific. I think, as an example, the requirement that written public testimony that we're going to print and provide to the board is to be provided the Friday before a meeting, we've run into the problem where stuff's coming in at five o'clock while we're trying to set up the tables, and we want to be clear with the public that we can't guarantee that stuff that's coming in that late is going to end up in front of the board, so we wanted to be clear and set a deadline. That's not a state law, that's not an ordinance, that's just a practical practice, to make sure that people know that they need to bring their own copies if it comes in after a certain time.
Wasn't it Wednesday by noon?
Uh-
Just so that way you guys had time to organize everything, get it to us, so we can review it before the meeting?
For, like, any final, I think, I think we said that for any final submittals for, for applicants, but in order to allow the public enough time, because we don't, at this point, post things, it could be as late as-
Noon, the end of the day, Wednesday. So it can be included.
E F?
Yep. On Page Three C.
Which I know was one of my asks of Sally, just because I know sometimes getting an email comment from the public makes it very challenging to read everything, sometimes before the meeting, and kind of digest that information, so having it ahead of time only makes it fair for us and the public, so that they also have access to that email and information.
I'm just double checking to make sure it's not different for public comments. That's for revisions and communications. From the applicant is noon on the Wednesday before the Planning Board meeting.
Yeah, so to going back to Ryan, your point, did you ask about which ones were more stringent?
Yeah, my, my thing was more, anything off the top of their head, we can discuss now that would be more stringent, or would be optional, so that we could get an idea and ask the questions now, so we don't have to do this for six months, so, it was just trying to get a better idea from the staff.
Okay, I mean, I was gonna ask, I asked Sally for that, but if staff, if you know off the top of your heads which ones are more stringent?
And I'll add, these, these seem pretty reasonable to me, in terms of reading the statutes and the FOIA stuff, these all seem reasonable, so I wouldn't mind sending this back to staff to work on a little bit more, but my general feedback is, this, this seems pretty good, and I, I like the, the edits to this.
And the public comments on Page Four G are the same timeline, noon, the Wednesday before, to be included in the packet.
And before noon on the business day proceeding, the scheduled meeting, they can be printed and distributed to board members, and copies made available for the public at the meeting. So the reason that that's there is to allow for the public to respond when things are sometimes added to the website, for example, after that Wednesday before the meeting. But anytime after noon, on the day, the business day before the meeting, if they want to provide written comment, they will need to print and bring it here themselves, or come to the meeting and speak.
That was a topic of discussion on the, at that January meeting, was making sure that staff had time to prepare it for us, and for us to have time to get it and digest it before the, the meeting.
Okay, so in addition to-
And I guess to answer the question, everything, there, nothing to my knowledge is on this that wasn't on the, on the, on what we've discussed from either last year's, last year's procedure review, this year's procedure review, and what we've talked about together at those meetings, or through case law, there, there's nothing erroneous that is in these.
Okay, so I think all in all, I don't think we have a ton of stuff, right? I think we do have some edits that have to be done, I definitely want to have a conversation, I'm not sure with whom, and who wants to be part of that conversation, around the opening remarks, that soliloquy, I think is, is pretty long, it's, it's a big mouthful, and I think I'd lose people by paragraph six anyway, so I think that could definitely use some tweaking, and then I think we've got some updates, but I think, you know, if we make those updates, we could definitely have this before us in the next meeting, and then move forward, that's my personal recommendation. Again, I, I want to make sure before we, my personal opinion is before we, you know, adopt these, don't, we want to make sure it's adopted in the correct form and fashion that we want it to be, versus, you know, fingers crossed that it happens, and then then we won't adopt it again, you know what I mean, like, but I'll leave it, I'm, I'm not a single board, so.
I also recall talking about the opening remarks, instead of going through this whole page stating pretty much that we have a copy of all the policies and procedures, procedures of how the meeting is run, and if people had questions about that, they could look at it on the table, I don't know if that was able to be adopted, instead of reading the whole thing?
I think making it part of the, the front page of the packet would be, or making a, a good portion of it the front page of the packet, and then having it just referenced by the, by the chair at the beginning of the meeting, right, is that, I think that's what we talked about in the meeting with Sally, was how much of this could be included in a cover sheet, and how much has to be spoken.
So in the policies and procedures, I think we should just, we should write that out.
I think, yeah, we can see what we could sort of separate out from being said to be included in the-
Yeah.
-packet. I didn't recall a specific question, so thanks.
Yeah, because if you look at it here, at the beginning of each meeting, and following roll call, the chair shall deliver a set of opening remarks, so I'm supposed to deliver a page and a half of opening remarks, so, and I'm hearing something different from Riley and Amanda, that, you know, maybe it's a reference, maybe it's a, you know, go to the website and review, that's very different with this policies and procedures said.
Yeah, the, there are certain things that really should be covered, which you do, in explaining how the meeting runs in, in most of the meetings, we didn't want to make the opening remarks part of the policy, so that it's so rigid that it's adopted, but the fact that you would open the meeting with opening remarks, and this is an example of what that might look like.
Sure, yeah, and again, this isn't about, you know, any chairperson that has been chair in the past, or, you know, current, it's about, you know, future chairpeople, right, and just being conscientious of the load and the work that they have on their plate, because it's a volunteer position, you know what I mean, like, we're doing this, you know, with our time, so.
I think, I think it was the intent from, it sounded like the intent was more like the clarity with the public, so the public's aware, because we're here every month, and we know what our roles are, but most, a lot of people's Planning Board meeting is their first Planning Board meeting, so they come in, you know, with a misconception of what, what we're here to do, and this clears it right up for them, so-
I wonder if, like, does City Council and School Board, do they also have all of this stuff, too? I wonder if, like, does city council and school board, do they also have all of this stuff too, like?
That was another thing, I wish Sally was here, because she said there was some, there was planning boards that they mandated to read this whole thing out of legal liability, because there's, there is, they had to have it covered, so.
No, I said the same thing. I was like, gosh, Sally should, you know, and definitely there's, she's coming forth with some real guardrails. So, I mean, she should probably come and be a part of this if she's kind of giving these directives.
Yeah, yeah, she went over a lot of it at the training in January, but the specific remarks, there was a draft, but they still had a different city name on them and things like that.
Okay.
So it sounds like the chair gets to decide what the opening remarks.
There's some latitude, but there's also certain elements that should be covered, and this was a recommended set of those remarks.
So I guess I'll see if does the board want to move forward to review and adopt? Or we've got some suggested edits, I'll just kind of open up and see how folks want to proceed.
It sounds to me that that staff has some things to update and clarify. And that there shouldn't be any issues with us adding it next month and then just finalizing those and adopting it at that time.
Yeah, perfect. Does everyone else feel the same, different?
I don't know if we could just get a vote of the board to direct us to do that, just that, that works.
So a vote or a motion?
A motion with a vote.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, I'll put in a motion then to delay to a date certain next month at our next meeting to review the edits and final changes provided by staff based on this discussion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Could I add?
Can we have a second and then we'll discuss? Second. All right, any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to add the feedback from, feedback from Sally on what's required, what in the opening remarks is required of the chair to say.
All right, so I have an amendment to the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion to the amendment to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries. Okay, back to the original.
The amendment just carried, now we got to vote on the motion.
Oh, sorry.
My amendment just carried, now we got to vote on the motion.
The first motion too?
Because we have a, right now, the first motion was made and then seconded, and then I did an amendment, and then we voted on the amendments, now we need to vote on the motion.
All right, looks like it passed. All right.
No, we got to hold the vote on the motion.
That's what I was going to do, and then, then you just said no. Yes, that's what I was going to do, Riley. Okay, yeah. All right, so now we have the original motion on the floor. And we have an amendment to the original motion, so now let's have a discussion around the original motion. And any discussion on the original motion, we have one amendment already. Any discussion, any further amendments to the original motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is a workshop, ordinance amendment process and 30-day response after public hearing. Hand it over to staff.
So at the last planning board meeting, the board was asked to provide, to review, hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation on the council's request to delay the applicability date of the general business zone application on the gray lawn bits. The board chose to delay that for two planning board meetings, to the April meeting instead of the March meeting. And it's been pointed out to us through legal counsel that after the closure of that public hearing, the ordinance requires that the board forward their recommendation to council within 30 days. So the board also asked for some additional information. And we'll provide that tonight when we get to that item. But the council staff and legal counsel are asking that the board provide a recommendation within the 30 days as required, and tonight would be the last or second to last day for the board to do that.
Okay, so is kind of the anchor of this ordinance, if we did not have a public hearing and we simply had a discussion, we suspended the public hearing and then asked for more information from city council, would this 30 days still stand?
So there is the opportunity to have a limited public hearing on the new information. There's not a lot of new information, but there's a new memo from the council in your packet. And the public hearing doesn't have to be reopened for the entirety of the item that you've already held a public hearing on. But you could accept public input at a public hearing on the new information, the single-page memo that's in your packet.
Okay, maybe, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't ask the question correctly. So this isn't about what just happened, this isn't about the delay of that zone change. Like, let's completely wipe that clear of this whole conversation. This is a workshop regarding, you know, how to properly conduct a meeting, right? And it's around the 30 days of public hearing. So my question for you is, and maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but what I'm reading this is, because it was public hearing, we are required then within 30 days to provide a recommendation. And it felt like the anchor was public hearing. If we did not have the public hearing and we suspended that and then had dialogue and discussion and then sent questions back to city council, would the 30 days still apply to us?
So it is based on when the public hearing is held and closed, that's what started the 30-day clock.
Okay.
So I suppose if you had continued the public hearing to the future date, that the public hearing was not closed, that it was continued, then that may have delayed the 30 days. The, you know, the other, the other alternative is that you could say, okay, we've had the public hearing, we have to provide the recommendation within 30 days as the ordinance says. We recommend that you do not pass this zoning change because we're still missing information, and this is what we're missing. You know, you can still provide a recommendation, it doesn't have to support something.
Yeah, I guess there are a couple of things. One, with regard to that, we are now providing an answer that they're looking for us to recommend or not recommend. There's no, if we're seeking additional information to clarify their ask by us sending back an unfavorable recommendation, there is no cause for them to then respond back with additional information because we have given them the answer with which they can then decide what they want to do with. So how do we ensure that we get the information that we need as a board in order to provide an intelligent, you know, answer to their question?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think the board asked for additional information on the item that we'll see later tonight, if we were being specific to that. You have that in your packet. If you still felt after that that you didn't have the information that you needed, you could say, you know, we vote to provide a negative recommendation unless the council provides A, B, C, and D so that we could formulate possibly a different recommendation. But without that information, we can't give you, you know, a favorable recommendation.
Right, so they can just take that and say, well, we've asked an answer, we're moving on.
Yep.
Whereas we actually aren't, to me, that is doing a disservice to the, to why we are here. We're here in order to understand the ask and to digest it and to compare it against the policies and procedures, the ordinances and everything else. So without that opportunity, I feel that, why ask us in the first place?
You could ask them for additional time, and they could send it back to you too, I mean.
Well, not if we're required within 30 days to give a recommendation up or down. And the other part of that, to me, is the fact that if we look at our next meeting at April 9th and we, our following meeting after that is May 14th, that's actually 35 days. So if we do ask for something, we actually don't have the opportunity to pick it up at our next meeting. We would, what, have to schedule a emergency or secondary meeting in order to meet that timeline? I think the timeline for 30 days needs to be reviewed.
It's too short.
It's too short.
Yep.
It doesn't allow for that.
Yeah, I don't think we can correct that tonight, but we could suggest that that be looked at. Because there are months where there's more than 30 days between the meeting and the next regularly scheduled meeting. You certainly have the option, though, when you don't have the information of saying we are missing answers to these questions, and without that, we don't support it. So please give us more time and disinformation so we can provide you a more informed recommendation.
So you're saying that the option to table to a date certain is not part of the procedures that we can do? So it's either yet, like Dave said, if you say no, then obviously it's dead in the water and it's on good faith that we will get it back. But in the spirit of partnership and collaboration, is there the opportunity to do table to a date certain?
There is, but once you've held and closed the public hearing, the city attorney is saying that the ordinance is pretty clear that you have 30 days to provide a recommendation. So we could have a special meeting if the meeting happened to be more than 30 days ahead. And I think in the spirit of collaboration and partnership, there are a lot of times when you'll be given that extra time. If, you know, there's an understanding that these are the things that we need to have a solid recommendation that's well thought out from the board.
That did actually happen last year on one of the...
I think it's happened many times.
Yeah. The alternative is to basically, if we have questions and feel that there's additional information, we suspend public hearing.
Yeah, that's how I'm reading it too.
Okay.
Yep. Which is unfortunate, because then you can't get the public's comments on it, so. But that's definitely how I read Sally's memo too, that if we can't get any public comment to help us, so that's unfortunate.
That's incorrect, I think. You can get public comment, the closing of the public hearing is what started the 30 days.
And how do you close a public hearing?
The board voted to close the public hearing.
So then how do I close it without a motion? Do I just say, we're done?
The board could have voted to continue the public hearing to a future meeting.
Okay.
Instead, the board voted to close the public hearing.
Okay. So as we proceed, not just with like this item, but other items like this, who would be here to help us? Because I work in insurance, I'm just going to be completely utterly fair with everybody, and my meetings are not governed by Robert's rules. I think we're all trying our best as we sit here to do the best for the city of Auburn and the constituents. So to that end, who, who would be able to guide and help us as we're navigating these tricky waters and ensuring that we're doing the best for city council, for the constituents, and for the board? Because I feel like we were just hung out to dry, to be frank with you at that point in time.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but I mean, we as staff certainly try to provide guidance. If there are specific things that we want to lay out that you need an attorney here for, then we could make those arrangements, that's expensive, and we try to address those things ahead of time in staff reports and getting opinions ahead of the meeting. But there's certainly times when we have the attorney attend the meetings as well.
I, I think it's important to point out on Sally's cover letter, second paragraph, the zoning restriction is more restrictive than the state's restriction. She clearly shares that state law does not require anything more than the conduct of a public hearing. But it's our zoning ordinance that requires the 30 days.
Yep.
So an adjustment there to the next meeting, whenever that meeting might be, whether it's 35, 37 days, however the calendar falls, but we need to understand, I'm pointing out, our zoning ordinance is more restrictive than state law, and that's something we need to recognize.
Yeah, and she just said, state law, Auburn Planning Board's procedure, state law shall be superseded by, okay, yeah.
When we're getting into discussion about an ordinance, you know.
That is the case, where we're more stringent than state law, for sure.
And so I think that's why it's important that we're so conscientious, if we are more stringent, just to give planning board members an opportunity to partner and really vet through all of this. Like, 30 days is a very short period of time when we meet every 30 days.
Yeah, and oftentimes it's 28 days, sometimes it's 32 days.
Generally, in the hearing, though, we'll be, we'll be giving our answer that, that date, you know what I mean? Like, when we have, when we have our hearings, most of our hearings don't end up in table and then assume a recommendation, and that is our answer, so we don't have to wait 30 days, you know what I mean?
Right, but I think that what I would like to know is how we go about modifying the ordinance to reflect the next scheduled meeting versus 30, our hard 30 days, because it's not, it's not accurate. And oftentimes, you know, we got lucky that this time, you know, the timeline works, sometimes the timeline won't work. And I think by putting in a hard timeline, you know, it's, you know, I get that people are looking for an expectation as to what they can expect, so maybe there's a different way to do it versus just next scheduled, you know, meeting as Tim had mentioned, but, you know, how do we go about reviewing that and asking Sally for a reflection on that? Because clearly, 30 days, if the next meeting is 35 days out, will require a special meeting and making sure that people are available.
Well, that seems logical. We can, if the board wants to, you can give us direction tonight to run that by the city attorney and also get the city council's take before we schedule a public hearing and all that, so. But it makes a lot of sense to reference that next regularly scheduled meeting rather than 30 days when we know some of those are more than 30 days away.
Do you want a motion on that, or can we just say we would like it? Since it's a workshop, do we, we don't need a motion?
Yeah, I can, if there's general consensus, and it seems like that's a logical thing to ask Sally for, because we know that it is a problem, that some of the meetings are more than 30 days apart. If the board wants to vote to give us that direction, then I can bring that to the city attorney and also...
Do we normally vote on workshops? Or I feel like in the past, what we've done is we've collaborated and we've given you feedback, and then you've taken that and collectively, and then gone back for a workshop. So I really want to be conscientious of not over-engineering some of this.
I want to make sure that there's a majority of the board that wants us to do it.
Okay. Show of hands, do you want to?
Sorry, clarifying point, this is for the 30-day versus next meeting idea?
This is to ask staff to seek a recommendation from Sally as to how to address the fact that 30 days is occasionally not enough time in order to make it through to the next meeting. And what language we would want, what she would recommend.
I want to, there was more conversation that took place, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, so, yeah.
Is anyone opposed to having Sally review that? Okay.
We'll get, get that opinion, thank you.
Alrighty, is everyone okay if I move on to the next workshop item? All right, the next workshop item is a brief on the city's accomplishments and progress related to the 2010 comprehensive plan update in 2021.
Thank you. So for this one, we are still, this is going to be really short because basically we're still circulating around, we have a spreadsheet that has showed, that has existed from 2018 showing the progress that different departments have made on various comp plan agenda items as they have been, as they're in their own domain. We have started a spreadsheet to get that going. And right now, planning has filled it in with what we have done, and we're circulating that around to the other departments. We're giving them a little bit of time to, to fill that out and get that back to us. Some have let us know that, that, that nothing much has changed since last time, others are still working. So we just wanted to let you know that that's a work in progress. And we're still hoping to have a presentation for you on that, covering all of the departments' work on the comp plan very soon, as soon as we get all those back from, from all the folks.
So is there something to workshop here, or is this more miscellaneous?
It's kind of more miscellaneous, yeah. I think, yeah. And I guess, yeah, just really an update, so I suppose it is more of a miscellaneous thing.
We had hoped to have the responses, but we don't have all of them yet to give you a good overview.
All right, is everyone good if we move on to the next workshop item? All right, is everyone good if we move on to the next workshop item? Okay, the next workshop item is approval expiration considered extension of one and two-year approvals for development projects, solar and other projects.
Yes, thank you. So this is a workshop that we've spoken about over the past several meetings, especially with solar projects that have asked for extensions. We, the planning board, wanted to do a workshop on possibly extending the initial, the initial timeline for, or the initial, how long an initial approval of a project, especially a solar project, is good for, or to extend the amount of time that, or to extend really how many, how much time someone can ask for an extension on one of their projects. So this workshop is particularly on section sixty thirteen oh eight, expiration of approval. I will say here that the city council may also want to consider revising, amending the ordinance when looking at approvals, how how long a planning board has to get back to an applicant on a specific project, and say what happens if the planning board doesn't get back, is it automatically denied, is it automatically approved? So the thought is, is that the council's thinking as well that they want to look at the section in general, and so I'm curious whether the planning board just thinks that this is, this is something that that you'd like to pursue, the expiration of approval date, looking at the other kind of timelines of, within thirty days, the planning board has to give a recommendation, the planning board has, like, a planning board approval is good for a year, et cetera. We think that it would be a good idea to get everybody on the same page, to get a public hearing started in case that's something that you might want to pursue, or if you have feedback about those processes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not seeing projects go from, solar projects in particular, we're not seeing them go from planning board approval to under construction, even in the two-year period. The CMP interconnect agreements and the P public utility commissions approvals are taking longer than that, so that's what really drove the start of the discussion. And then we're also seeing financing and lining up contractors and obtaining building materials for more regular construction-type projects, not just solar projects, quite often take more than that, one to two years as well. So if the board thinks this is worth looking into, then we would bring it to the council as well, make sure there's consistency that both boards think this is worth pursuing, and then we'd work on a proposal.
I have a quick clarifying question. I read this over, it makes sense to me, but is this granting the initial permit would now be twenty-four months versus the existing twelve? Or is this extensions are twenty-four month versus the existing twelve?
So I think the way that we drafted this draft to start the discussion is that the initial approval could be as much as twenty-four months, and then could be extended for twenty more four months. There's no magic to that number, this is just a starting point, and is this, is this idea worth pursuing? And then any feedback like that, like maybe the initial twenty-four is too much, and...
So what, basically, what I'm hearing you say is a lot of the PUC applications, solar and stuff like that, and some business stuff, due to funding, lending, financial institutions, whatever, the twelve-month timeframe is becoming difficult, and what would, in sense, lessen staff's workload on something that's already approved? And business for us, on a meeting basis, is if these original twelve-month permits were twenty-four month by default, but they were still achieved under the same processes that we use now, we're basically just saying, yeah, your twelve-month is a twenty-four, but nothing else changes. We're not changing how these are approved or anything like that, correct?
Not how they're approved, it would just be that approval is good for a longer period of time, but they could also ask for an extension that would go beyond the twenty-four months by coming back to you. Instead of coming back after twelve months, they'd come back at twenty-four.
Thank you.
And I guess part of the workshop could be, as well, whether those time extensions seem reasonable, they're really just suggestions based on what we've seen over the last chunk of time, or if you think another, another kind of time extension would be better, or to apply it to more projects or fewer, up to you guys there.
I think a two-year site plan and then a two-year extension, I mean, after four years, after that, if it can't be accomplished, then...
It does, it does say a single two-year extension, so that is, that is notching it down at four years, though, right?
It is, and that's what it says now, so after the two years, they have to come back for either some kind of a modification or a brand-new approval in order to get beyond the two years.
Eric questioned with regard to, I know that obviously, we've seen a lot of the solar projects come back. There's been a couple of non-solar projects that have asked for an additional year extension, at Washington Street, for example. For the most part, is the real issue with regard to the one versus two years on the original approval more focused on the solar projects? And if that's the case, does that second sentence where you've added, or in the case of solar projects, PUC approval, main power interconnect agreements? So are we starting, is the suggestion that we start the clock on solar projects once those agreements are in place? And if that's the case, then do we need an initial movement because we're starting the clock later? Is that how I'm reading that sentence?
Yeah, so that, we had that, if the development is contested with litigation, that it delays the start of that approval period, but it does delay the start of that approval period for the PUC, the way that it's written. Maybe that gets dropped, and we look at a two-year approval that doesn't get delayed for those, but all of those are are up for discussion as a way to not approve a solar project, knowing that they're definitely, or most likely, coming back to you for multiple extensions. Maybe one or the other is better, that the two years plus two-year extension, and not to expand that PUC approval would work as well.
Are there, are there any issues or drawbacks or content or potential concerns by making a site plan two years versus three years, four years, five years? Like, you know, if we're going to move it, like, I would just want to know, like, are there risks that we're going to be now occurring because we've gone from one year to two year?
Yeah, I think so. There are some risks. I think the big risk is that the city decides to move in a different direction and maybe change the zoning in an area. Let's say it was industrial, and the city decided that they want it to be residential, and there's this approval out there that's good for two years, they could still build that industrial-approved use after we've changed the zone to residential potentially, if it's already approved. So if it does extend that, it also gives some certainty to, you know, in the case of a large housing development that they're looking for a buyer for, it gives financial institutions and potential buyers a little more certainty that they have enough, enough time to get started before they have to come back and wonder whether they'll get a new approval.
I I think that last part's most important to me, is that just, things become more and more complex every year with getting approvals, and the laws get stricter, finance laws get stricter. I think it's getting more challenging for businesses to complete projects like that, especially on the larger scale that we're seeing now. And, you know, conditions change and stuff like that. They have to be able to adapt their plans and meet the changing needs of what's going on in the economy.
I I agree. Overall, I think this is, I'm totally for this. In regards to the question of, should we arbitrarily lay it to all permits? I'm not saying that. I'm of the school of, let's get our feet wet before we jump in the pool, but this in front of us today, I think it's a good idea.
I agree with you, I like that.
So I I definitely agree with the solar projects, especially, when we think about the impact those have, I think it makes sense that they have to take so much time that, you know, if we wait two years, it's not going to change much in that area. I guess one of my concerns going forward, and this is a question, let's say we approve, like, a really big project, and it has a traffic impact, well, three years down the road, if they approve three more projects on that road, is that traffic plan still good for that first one? That's just what comes to mind, like, what changes, and does a traffic engineer has to have to keep in mind that they just approved this down the road and they have to take, take that into account with their traffic? That's a question, you know?
Yeah, and the, so if there was, you know, let's say those three projects were small projects that didn't trigger the need for a full traffic assessment or a traffic movement permit, then those would just be added volume. But if they were larger projects that triggered the need for the assessment or a traffic movement permit, then those new projects have to assume the trips that were in the previous approvals in their analysis.
Okay, yeah, just making sure, because that can cause some issues with infrastructure. But I guess in terms of solar, I'm I'm not really worried about traffic, because there's only going to be people going there to maintain the facility and keep track of it, so.
Yep.
That would be my feedback, that we just make sure that we don't do something that's going to negatively impact anything.
So would that be part of staff's briefing, then? I I totally agree with you. Would that be part of staff's briefing, then? So if they were to come back in two years, I would hope that we would see in our packets that, you know, within the last twenty-four months, you know, these other ones were approved, so let's take that into consideration, right?
Yeah, if their approval had expired, otherwise, the new proj, the the new projects coming in after your approval, as long as they're not too small to trigger a traffic review, already have to consider the trips that were approved previously that aren't yet in the system. So we get those calls all the time from traffic engineers, though.
Okay. I mean, the only other, sorry, the only other thing I would say is when, just for, like, sake of meeting minutes, I think it was discussed, an opening comment for this workshop, that it was planning board's recommendation, this was actually staff's recommendation that you guys came forward and and recommended, because this is a trend that you had seen, which is great, right? Because you are the front lines of this, just from an agenda standpoint, I just want to make sure that it was not planning board that made this recommendation, it was staff's recommendation because of the trends that you saw.
Yeah, we had brought it up, and the planning board agreed that we could workshop it.
What, sorry?
You had mentioned that you think city council may be wanting to look at this as as well, is that accurate? And should we be waiting, you know, do we, if we suggested something, you know, I guess what's what's the right timing of that?
So the city council's looking at a change to the same chapter, not this specific change, but this feedback will help to see if they want to do a little bit more than what they've already talked about.
Okay, okay.
All righty, any other dialogue discussion before I move on? Okay, so next item on the agenda is a public hearing, new information text amendment. It is around the delayed applicability date of the ordinance, and I will hand it over to staff.
So at the last meeting, the planning board held a public hearing on this item about the delayed applicability date for, effective date and applicability date for order, ordinance number twenty-six dash one-one-two-zero-two-zero-two-three. And as you know, that was the change that changed approximately sixty acres in the Gray Sloan pit area from ag resource protection to general business zone, parcel IDs two-eight-nine-zero-zero-one, two-eight-nine-zero-zero-two, two-seven-seven-zero-two-six. That went into effect in December. This proposed text amendment would delay that effective and applicability date till July one, 2024. The board held a public hearing, had questions, sent a request back to city council to answer those questions. The council reviewed that request at their meeting following the planning board meeting and has responded with a memo that is in the planning board packet for tonight's meeting. The council received that request, provided a response that there are additional considerations prior to the implementation that they would like to have time to make. There are four main areas which need further consideration. One, the status of the current gravel mining operations, both within and outside of the Lake Auburn watershed, and future plans for those mining operations. Two, ensuring continued access to the abutting city-owned landfill. Three, whether potential topographical changes caused by the development would represent a risk to the drinking water quality. And four, whether the general business zone is the appropriate district to be applied either in whole or in part to those parcels. The council's request is so that they could have a public discussion and consider those things, and possibly make amendments to the general business zone between now and its effective date. They don't necessarily have to make all those changes by July first by this order. We know that the timing will be tight, given where we are today at the twelfth of March, but they're asking for additional time with that July one applicability date to be able to have those discussions, consider that new information. So tonight, we're asking the planning board to provide a recommendation to the council on this item.
Yeah, so I'll be really transparent here. I'm a little gun-shy as to where we go from here, right? So typically, in the past, I would say, thank you, I appreciate staff for your briefing, I would open up for public comment, I'd close public comment, and then I'd open up for discussion, then we would make a recommendation. So staff, what would be the appropriate next move, then? Should we have public comment? Should we not? What is the...
There should be an opportunity for the public to comment on the new information that was presented, and really, the only new information that's been presented tonight is the resolve from the city council detailing the reasons that they would like this extra time.
Does that open up any other, like, thirty days? Like, is something else going to happen? Like, I really want to be conscientious of policies and procedures at this point in time. So if I open up public comment and I close public comment, what does that do from a thirty-day perspective?
Nothing. The public hearing on the overall information's already been had, and you can provide a recommendation after the public comment on the new information.
Are we, I guess, but let me go back to a question that I asked earlier when we were reviewing that section. If we close public comment, we are now required to provide a response within thirty days because we've closed public comment.
You did at last month's meeting, yes.
But we're opening it up again with new information.
With new information.
But we didn't, we didn't provide a response, other than we need more information, and which we were told was not an appropriate response.
They've provided the information you asked for, and they're asking for a recommendation on this item.
But we're opening up public comments, so that, is that another thirty days?
Why would that...
The thirty-day thing comes in if we were to table it again, and what they're asking for is a recommendation. Yeah, because if we, so if we say, if if we do what the packet hears, or you can either make a motion to recommend or make a motion to not recommend, that's the thing that they needed within thirty days. So once we do that, if we open up public comment or not, then the thirty, that's the end of the thirty-day clock. Thirty days if we were to, if we were to suspend it again and not answer their request.
I mean, is there a reason why you need an additional thirty days?
No, 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 I'm just trying to follow policies and procedures. I definitely feel like we were trying to do our absolute due diligence as a board and do our best job partnering with city council, and I definitely feel like we had no way, you know what I mean? So I just want to make sure I get clear guidance so that I don't get another memo saying that we did something incorrect.
So for a clear guidance, we did get the opinion from the city attorney, so what we're suggesting is that you, if there's members of public here that want to comment on the new information, you have a limited public hearing to the new information, and at the end of that, you provide a recommendation to the council, and that if you're still missing information, it could be that we are still missing information, and until we have that, we don't recommend approval of this. It could be a recommendation in favor. It's, you have a lot of...
I'm just trying to, I'm just making sure that we're not, like, stepping in any more pitfalls.
So city council can ask these questions of the owner regardless of whether it's in effect or not, right?
Yep, I think what it does is it puts on hold their ability to apply for permits under the general business zoning during the time that that discussion happens.
That would be a reason.
Yep, and that is the reason.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, opening up a public comment, please come to the podium. You have five minutes, state your name and your address.
Evan Seer, 120. I'm sort of perplexed as to why I'm allowed to speak to you tonight. I'm not sure why any of the comments that I would make now would be germane to your decision. You've already been schooled and been told that your public hearing was closed. And you're supposed to make decisions in a public hearing based on the comment during that public hearing, not outside of the public hearing? This is apparently outside of the public hearing for which you are making a decision tonight. I'm just taking this opportunity to sort of point that out and, and discuss how sort of ludicrous this is. And I'd also like to thank members of the Planning Board for doing their best. I understand that you're not lawyers. You're citizen volunteers, and you do the best you can. And some folks have lots of experience and some folks have less experience. And you, you have to lean on the direction and the policies that you've been given. I think it's worth pointing out that without the revisions being provided, Planning Board discussion deliberation is actually included within a public hearing under the definitions of the public policy. So I had all kinds of things that I wanted to say, but the reality is, as I'm thinking about them, they really don't matter because you can't take into account what I say tonight with regard to your decision because the lawyers have made it very clear. That public, public comment already closed, that public hearing already closed. Nothing that gets said tonight can be used to make that decision. Your decision needs to be made based on the public comment you had. Thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, public comment is closed. So at this point in time, it's my understanding from, you know, prior history that we have a conversation with staff, answer any questions that might have been posed.
Eric, can you clarify Mr. Seer's comment with regard to our, with regard to public comment? My, would we have been able to accept comment on numbers one through four since this is the new information that was provided? And therefore, the public comment that we would be soliciting for tonight is specifically around the new council order? Or like, I'm just trying to, to interpret what I just heard.
Yes, the Planning Board, at a minimum, has to allow public comment on the new information that's submitted. So you could open up the public hearing to consider public comment on the entirety of what's been before you as a board and what you heard last month. If you want to, you don't have to. You can limit it to the new information so we don't rehash the same things that were hashed out by you and the public and staff at the last meeting. But if that's what you want to do, you can also open the public hearing to accept input on things that were already discussed last month. We try to, going through the process, we try to limit public hearings to the new information so that we don't just rehash the same things we did at the previous meeting. But you have the ability to take public comment on the entire topic if you want to.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I, I like the word rehash that you used there, Eric, because there's a part of me that feels like this whole process is rehashing something that we've already gone through and answered and resolved before. So thank you for using that.
Okay, so, so I have some questions. So, okay, so with the Planning Board, the City Council said, status of the current gravel mining operation, future plans. So I never, I don't recall when a developer comes in, if we say, this is, this is a zone change, right? And they want to go to a developer and say, hey, you're going to sell your pit tomorrow? Are you going to keep your pit? What are your plans for it? Like, that I don't feel like is the purview of the Planning Board. Like, what a private owner chooses to do with their company, I don't feel like should influence our zone or ordinance change personally.
I agree. I would agree with that also. I mean, the, we don't know, it could be speculative. To me, it's, you know, best guess, you know, we certainly can't go back to them and say, well, you changed your mind. You know, we, we did this on your behalf. And I don't think that it's, for me, number one is, is not part of the conversation and should not be part of why we would look to request more information or get feedback. That's not part of my decision in where we were and to request or agree to a delay.
I agree, and it shouldn't be a part of any decision. Agree?
Sorry, I must be missing something. Where is that stated?
That's number one of the City Council's reasons why they want us to consider to propose.
Sorry, I was looking at the staff's report.
So in, the Council is looking for them to have more time to look into these things. They're not asking you to look into these things.
Correct, yeah. So, so that's not our purview to even look at. Like, I, that's not something that should be before the Board.
Yeah, and they're not asking you to.
Okay, perfect, perfect. The other thing too, whether potential topographical changes caused by development will present a risk. I don't know if anyone on the Board has seen the development. I haven't, maybe City Council has, so then they can look at the development that's been placed to them, and they can review the topographical changes. I haven't seen any plans for development, so I don't know how they can evaluate topographical changes when a develop, something has, but maybe they have something that we haven't seen. Totally is possible.
They're looking for time to get things that we haven't seen and consider those in making a final decision.
So this is a zone and ordinance change, this isn't a development change.
Yeah, so I guess I'm confused. Why are we talking about a potential, like a what-if? There's so many what-ifs. We're not doing a what-if on what-if could happen to the land? What-if could happen to next door? What-if could, it's, we're changing a zone.
And I think what, what's being questioned topographically is you could fill portions of that pit that make the stormwater runoff drain into what is still mapped as within the watershed.
But wouldn't any development, potential development, be a special exception that we would have to vote on in the future?
Yeah.
Not, not every potential development. Anything that's in the general business wouldn't have to come before us.
If it's permitted in less than 5,000 square feet, yeah, but bigger than that would have to come.
So not, not every development that goes there, that every fill, say they build the neighborhood, say they build something that's in the general business would come before us, especially if it aligns with the general business. Only thing that would come before us if it's a special exemption.
But there would still have to be a permit, and there'd still have to be laws to fol, to follow through that would protect the land, protect the lake, protect everything. At this point, I just find it extremely frustrating that we're going through all these what-ifs, and there's a zone change that's proposed that has been approved and passed. And now it's being brought forward to rehash out over a what-if.
I, I would agree. And Eric, I guess my, my understanding of, of anything that would come before the permit, your department would be reviewed for runoff for different things, correct? I mean, any, any, any application would. So to me, to ensure that they're, you know, understanding what the potential risk to the water quality is, is part of your responsibility for any request for any development anywhere in the city, correct?
Yep.
So special, special exception or not, it would still have to be a process that has to go through.
Right, state, our, a zoning change doesn't usurp DEP water protection laws that would have to be followed by any development that happened there. And also, it's kind of a side topic, but this is a slippery slope where if we can delay zones, delay things because of, of, you know, future plans, oh, let's, we need to delay this zone approval because somebody might paint their house orange, you know? It's, we start going down a road that is a very slippery slope, that's full of snowballs that we can't even anticipate.
I could not agree more with you. And I was also thinking about all the zone changes that we had made over the last couple of years. Not once did we go to anyone within the zone and say, hey, what do you plan on doing with your business? What do you plan, you know what I mean? Like, there's so much of this that, from our perspective, so, so what I'm hearing you say, Eric, is this is not within the purview of Planning Board. We asked for what changed. This is not within our purview, so I, I don't feel like we can comment about this, and we're still back at square one, so.
So it sounds like.
What we really need is just a recommendation. It sounds like that's a negative recommendation coming from a lot of the opinions shared. So we should just send along that, that recommendation.
I think we've heard from four members that sounds like they do not support this. And that's all we're looking for is a recommendation.
Just, we just got to make the recommendation not hash out the.
Bob, did you want to say something?
I guess, just a question. And I guess Scarborough Downs comes to my mind as a basis for a question. You know, we've talked about once zoning's in place, then developer does whatever. But I think there are instances where, and I think this is what the Council is asking for, is actually work with a developer. My understanding, Scarborough really wanted in their planning to create a new downtown, a new town center. And the Scarborough Downs, in, in a lot of respects, is similar to Gendron's property. It's nothing built there, it's an operation right now, yes, an industrial operation. Scarborough Downs is quite similar, it was a better piece of land, it was flat, and not a lot of activity, you know, dying activity. But I think there was a vision that the town had, and I believe they did work with a developer. And, and I'm not sure what type of zoning they actually came up with. I, my sense is that it kind of goes to the form-based coding type, that they really wanted to work from a center and work outward. They wanted in the center, it's commercial activity, some residential above, go less dense, provide, you know, some of those, the coffee shops and so forth as they build out into the residential. So I think, you know, the city, and I think the Council might be thinking, here's an opportunity. Here's a piece of land, right now, there's just an activity there, there's no essential structures. So is there an opportunity, both for the developer as well as the city, to? Yeah, I don't know, I'm just, I guess ask the question, is there a similarity between what we have here to what Scarborough had and we see being developed?
Sure, sure, and I just wanted to be very clear that we're staying in our own lanes. I appreciate the fact that, you know, that other municipalities are trying to grow and develop, and they work with, you know, city staff and planning. I am not going to work with a developer and, and, and help them. That's, that's not my job, that's not the Board's job, is to work with a developer. So I want to be very conscientious that we stay in our lanes. And, and that's fantastic that the Council, you know, wants to work with the developer. I mean, they can do that, staff can do that. That's not my, that's not our job on the Board, is to work with a developer to ensure that we get proper zoning that meets exactly what the, that's a slippery slope. That's almost collusion in my mind, so I feel like we need to be very careful.
I guess I just offer that is not that we are, we'd make that decision, but I think that's what the Council might be asking us, is to encourage them or to allow them to proceed and work with developer. Because I think when Gendron first came forward and proposed something, it was more housing than anything. I think there was a reaction to, I've forgotten what the number of units that was maybe suggested, I think was reported in the newspaper. But at the same time, we kind of talked about residential, and all of a sudden, now we're talking total, total business. So, you know, I think the Council is just wanting to work with the developer, not that, you know, some, and I think they do say possible amendments to the zone. So I think it's just to allow the Council to work with the developer, Gendron in this case, to come up something that's good for both parties.
Uh, uh, thanks, Bob. I think for, for me, where, where I go back to is something that Stacy had mentioned. And, and certainly, when this first came before the Planning Board, the recommendation from city staff based on the area, based on the other zones within the immediate vicinity that were adjacent to the property was general business. So the, the, the staff had the opportunity to suggest and recommend, you know, what we do with that area. Riley, if I'm incorrect, you know, please let me know when I'm, when I'm done. But my understanding is, is that the reason why we went with general business was because it was a recommendation and it was certainly across the street in another area so that it is consistent with zoning versus other surrounding areas.
It's not touching any other general business zoning, and that was one of my points. I don't want to rehash the reason I voted against the general business zone because I stated it all in those other meetings, but it's not, it's not touching other general business zone. It's surrounded by, I don't, we don't need to pull up the map. I, uh, what we need to do here is send a recommendation on to whether or not we think they should have 30 more days or not, so it's.
Oh, no, we have to send a recommendation now because we're at the 30-day mark.
Yeah, what I meant is whether we, whether we recommend that they are allowed to have this delay, not, or not. If this speeds it up at all, I'll make a motion to get downvoted, or if someone wants to make a motion that'll pass, feel free. Well, I'm going to be, like, we're doing this the different way because I would recommend that they do do this. So I'm going to read this and then have to get downvoted, and then you're going to have to make a recommendation that passes. Because what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a recommendation that they do adopt this. So since I'm going to get downvoted, I would think in the manner of efficiency, someone who is making a recommendation that they do not adopt it or implement it should make the motion.
Did everyone catch what Riley said?
I'll just make that, so I make a motion to recommend that the City Council adopt and implement an applicability date of July 1, 2024 per Section 60-1383, effective date, an applicability, applicability date of ordinance number 26-11202023. To read as follows, the zoning map amendment to this chapter evidenced by ordinance 2611202023 relating to the rezoning of approximately 60 acres in the parts of the city assessors, parcel ID 289001, 289002, and 277026. From the agricultural, from the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zoning District to the General Business Zoning District become effective on date on December 9, 2023 pursuant to Section 2.6C of the city charter.
You're doing good.
In order to allow time for residents and property owners to become familiar with this zoning map amendment for the City Council to further study and determine whether any additional amendments to this chapter related thereto are necessary or desirable, ordinance number 2611202023 shall not become applicable until July 1, 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion of the motion?
I, I would be in favor of this. This isn't say, saying that we're going to change general business. What it's saying is we're delaying the applicability date to have the discussion. So now, after this, you know, we can now have the discussion. And if we don't feel like changing anything as a Board, we can forward on that recommendation at a later date. But if we do feel like staff is recommending some good changes, which it seemed like last month, they were in favor of recommending this and having that discussion, I would be on this issue on the staff's side to, to go ahead and have that discussion. So that's, that's why I would be in favor of this.
I guess my one comment would be where it says, in order to allow time for residents and property owners to become familiar with the zone map amendment and for the City Council to further study and determine, it goes on. Have, haven't the land property orders, land property owners? Have haven't the land property orders, land property owners and residents already been given time to understand and public comment and voice their opinion on this?
You want me to answer that?
If you think that, then you should not vote for what I just recommended.
Well, I can't vote, but I'm just reiterating that we've hashed this out with the public. They've asked their questions. We've asked our questions. I just don't understand. I guess when Stacy said you want to give further discussion, I'm giving my further discussion.
So it passed about 12 weeks ago?
In December, yep.
Beginning of December?
Yep, yep.
And then we discussed it a month prior to that.
And I think we discussed it a number of times over the previous year or more with a lot of public hearings.
So I'm not sure, and it can still be discussed and learned about. And even if we don't delay the applicability date. So I'm not sure it's necessary.
There's been more protect Lake Auburn signs and mailboxes from my perspective. There've been plenty of time for people to know what's going on.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second to the motion. I've had discussion. All those in favor of the motion? All right, all those opposed to the motion? Okay, the motion does not carry. So at this point in time, I would seek a motion to not recommend. And if you seek a motion to not recommend, I would just ask that you have a few findings. I heard some findings. People had had some findings, you know, such as the reasons why they want further consideration really is not in the purview of the planning board. So that's a finding that, you know, first from our perspective, we have no new information. We literally still have no new information in which to delay the applicability date. So I would seek a motion.
To clarify, the recommended motion includes the language that says to read as follows that Riley read previously. Given a motion to not recommend, my assumption is that that language is not applicable and necessary given we are not making that recommendation to move the effective date, correct?
Yeah, you could use the recommended motion. Recommend against delaying the applicability date of ordinance number and use that 26112023. You don't have to give us the entire text in verbatim.
That's why I was hoping someone made the motion before I made my motion too.
So I'll go ahead and then make the motion to not recommend to the city council that they adopt and implement an applicability date of July 1, 2024, per section 60-1383, effective date, applicability date of ordinance 2611202023. Is that accurate? Wait, is that's read?
Yes.
Does he need a finding of fact as part of the motion?
It would be good if you gave reasons for your motion, yes.
Based on the fact that, oh, let's see. The working with property owners is not within the purview of the planning board and should not be considered when making our ruling and judgment. The fact that the public has had plenty of opportunity to present before the board and have been listened to. And we have based previous, just our previous motion to make and recommendation based on staff recommendations and public comment and feel that at the moment there is no additional scientific or any other information of value that needs reconsideration.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is feedback capital improvement revised CIP and packet. If you guys have had a chance to review it.
Yep, so we, I was hoping to have another, we don't have a revised CIP today, but what we was thinking that we may have for today. But instead, I was thinking this could be an opportunity to just hear. You all had a, you received the CIP packet from the city manager at the last meeting. And they're now in the process of revising that based on comments from boards and from the from the various boards. So I'm wondering if if you all have had a chance to review that first CIP from last month and have any have any feedback on that?
Can staff clarify our role in the CIP process and whether or not if we find something that we align on and that we are like wired? Do they need so much vehicle repair? Like, I don't feel that that's within the purview of the planning board. So what specifically should we be looking at specifically with regard to the CIP?
Your your specific role would be looking at it from the perspective of the comp plan or any other land use plans and just providing recommendations that either the expenditures are are in line with those plans or if they conflicted with those plans. You could recommend that the council not move forward with a certain item. I don't think it would get down to, you know, a specific vehicle repair item or anything like that. But if we were going to spend all of our road improvement money in the ag zone, that wouldn't make much sense when there's needs where a lot more people live in town, something like that.
Does it actually specify to that granularity where the money is going to be spent as to which roads or just the dollar amount that's going to be used in those types of repairs?
So there, I believe there are some specific roads identified in the current years plan. And then as you look further out years, you may not see as much specificity. And we'll bring you the revised CIP for an upcoming meeting anyways. But if you have any preliminary feedback, we'll take it. And that can be considered as the manager revises the CIP that he recommends to the city council.
Can we add Hotel Road to that?
Hotel Road?
That's a state road, right?
And that is scheduled for a significant paving project. I, we can get the information on that.
Can we fast track it?
I know, exactly.
Marrow Road was the the one that caught me. That's about 20 years overdue.
I think it's that intersection of Hotel, not only Marrow Road, but I think that area.
Oh, yeah, the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, it's bad.
I just want to say in general, for feedback, thanks for the comp plan investment because we're due for a comp plan review, a full one. And it'd be exciting to to do that this next year and get a refreshed comp plan.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Any members from the public would like to come forward, say your name, five minutes. Address.
Hi, Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. I guess I'm a little bit confused about some of the things that happened tonight. I don't often find myself in that position. And I think if one person who's watching this is confused, it means there are going to be more people that are watching that are confused. That's sort of, as a teacher, I always say if someone has one person has a question, that means more than one person has the same question. And I think that, and I apologize if I'm overstepping because this was on the agenda, but policies and procedures were discussed earlier. And there's a clear directive in the policies and procedures that members of the public speak only to the topic that a public hearing is is about. And so I I kind of got up and I I heard from staff that, you know, this was only about these, these, these four things that were coming from from council. And this wasn't really about the applicability date. So I made my, I changed my comments accordingly. After planning board members sought some clarification and staff sought to provide that clarification. And the clarification was that, well, no, the planning board actually could take whatever public comment they wanted and actually could continue public comment and hearing on the previous item, although the public hearing had apparently been closed according to legal. And so I bring this up just because it was, it was, that was really confusing to me tonight. And and so I would, I I I would just ask as a member of the public if in looking at policies and procedures, the planning board could seek to better define exactly what a public hearing is so that way members of the public know when their time is done. Historically, I think the planning board, when they table things, just continues public hearing and has additional public comment. I think what I saw tonight was that someone asked questions of the planning board process and they knew a definition of public hearing that the planning board didn't know. Maybe staff didn't know. And I think that's why staff gave one answer at one time and a different answer at another time. And if it's confusing enough for staff and there are people in the public asking, then I would just say it might be worth kind of going back and 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 seeking kind of a tighter definition there. Like, you guys are under a lot of scrutiny. And we've been seeing a lot of this lately. And and as a member of the public, it becomes very confusing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go to the final items. So miscellaneous. So I know we, I'm gonna hand this over to staff. So we have upcoming agenda items and then also ad hoc committee meeting. I'm going to actually start with the ad hoc committee meeting. So I read the memo from Sally about the LD 2003 and a couple of things. One is I would like to see the email that was sent to Sally regarding my question to see if we could have like a member of the public as a part of it. I asked that question for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, I think about my daughter was a student member on the school board and she loved being a part of that. So she would join the meetings and she would participate and she was part of committees. And I think to myself, if there is a high school student that, you know, has a passion for zoning and building and development and this student would like to be a part of this committee and learn about kind of this process, according to Sally, that's not acceptable. And when I look at this memo, it seems very targeted when I see former planning board members. So I feel like, a couple of things. One, the chair, I was told as a chair to appoint people. So it was the the planning board with chair would like to. I didn't get asked if I, I didn't say, oh, I'd really like to do that. I was told I needed to do that and so I did it. So I I feel like I'm not sure what email was sent to Sally because I feel like it's very misleading, her memo, as I'm reading it. And then also, too, it's it's concerning to me that she made a legal opinion and called out certain people within her legal opinion without looking in totality of the app, the applicability of having a citizen come. Again, if I, if there was a student that wanted to join and be a part of it, how phenomenal would that be moving forward? But according to Sally, that can't happen because of her comment. So, I mean, I personally would like more information around this because I feel like it's not clear or accurate.
And I would just, along those lines, we do have a vacant student position on the planning board. We've had trouble filling it. We've been trying to find interested students. But if any of you know students, junior, senior level students that would want to be on the planning board as a student rep, please encourage them to apply.
So we still have questions around this. I mean, this is just miscellaneous items, so I'll just work with staff on it. I think she's a little ambiguous in her comments. So, you know, I just need clarification, that's all. So anyway, I'll hand it over to you guys for the miscellaneous.
So can I comment on this?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm just coming up with an idea. She's referencing a section of Auburn code. Perhaps we, I'm not sure if it's state statute or not, that it can only be planning board members. But could we bring it up at a future meeting that we can also include members of the community as the chair would see fit? Because right here it says the chairperson of the planning board may assign members of the board. But could we say members of the board or the public? I guess I'm asking, is that possible? Because this is Auburn code, not statute.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could be amended to say that. With council approval and a planning board recommendation, it would be a zoning amendment. You also have the option to propose that the council create a committee that's made up of board members and the public for for a certain topic. But, yep, that's certainly a possibility.
So is that a different committee than than this committee then? So we would recommend that we make a committee that is made of multiple individuals?
So the the chair of the planning board can create work groups or committees of planning board members. If you wanted it to expand beyond planning board membership, then I think what what Ryan Smith had said, you could look at amending the ordinance or you could tell the council that we think this should have broader representation and recommend that they create a committee that includes membership beyond the the planning board. It's this section of the ordinance just gives the chair authority to create work groups of planning board members. It just doesn't go beyond that.
Is there, is there a comparable paragraph in with regard to the city council and committees? And does that language also say only within the city council or does that?
No, it doesn't. There's a whole section on boards and committees. We could dig into that, but I don't have that whole section. But there's a much more extensive section on boards and committees that the council and mayor have authority to create or appoint.
Okay.
The meetings are open to the public. So in my experience with them is the public members have been allowed to share their ideas and concerns and stuff just as freely as the regular members of the.
Yeah, I saw that. There's nothing to include members of the public attending. Yeah, I saw that.
The complete streets committee and.
We'll be posting these meetings so the public will be aware. And if there's anybody that knows the committee's meeting, they can reach out to us and we can, we can inform them of the dates. Or they can follow the agendas at City Hall or on the website or on the calendar. We'll be meeting a week from tonight, next Tuesday, for the first time, here at City Hall.
Sure. Has it been announced as to, I think you were gonna name two?
I'm sorry?
I think you were gonna name two to be part of that committee with respect to LD 2003?
You were gonna name people to that.
Oh, sure, yeah, so it's Riley and myself. Yep, yep. Oh, sure, absolutely. All right, Catherine, any other items for miscellaneous?
So we didn't get any new projects this month for the planning board. So I think it's gonna be working on some of these ordinance changes that we've discussed today. All that's on the agenda is what I'm anticipating, just follow up from from those items. I'm hoping to have a real presentation for the for the comp plan this coming time. So fingers crossed that that'll that that'll happen. I'll do my best. And I'm hoping to also maybe have an update on some of the LD 2003 discussion that we've had just with the public. And but that'll be an ongoing process and I'm not expecting that to be finished by then. But that's what I have.
Catherine, did I hear you say that with regard to the list of things that we hadn't covered last year that we wanted to make sure that we covered? Was that the list that you were referring to as far as an update as to where we are on those and making sure that we've got some movement or?
Yeah, all of that as well, for sure.
Okay.
Is that, is that ad hoc meeting happening in here in chain, in city chambers or just a city? Where's that meeting gonna take place?
I reserved one of the rooms upstairs here at City Hall, but I I need to check whether it was, I think it was the community room or it may have been 204. I need to just see which one.
They're right next to each other, but either 204 or the community room.
Thanks.
Good question. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? All right, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, motion carries, excellent.